Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting for the Farmington Hills Council to order tonight. It is our regular meeting on June 27th, and I'm glad to see a full house. We will start, as we always do, with first the call to a regular session to order, and we begin with the pledge. And I have asked Dr. Patricia Coleman Burns to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman Burns.
Gotta get the Coleman Burns in, yes.
Next, we will start with the roll call.
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Council members Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
And Newland?
Here.
All present?
Okay. We need approval of the regular session meeting agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, Mayor, I move that the council approve the agenda as published.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Bridges, supported by Councilmember Boloware. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Next is the proclamation recognizing July 2022 as National Parks and Recreation Month. Councilmember Bolowar, will you read that for us?
Sure. Thank you. National Parks and Recreation Month proclamation, July 2022, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout our state and country, and whereas the City of Farmington Hills Special Services Department is vitally important to establishing and maintaining our quality of life, ensuring the health of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the entire community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs are shown to increase a community's property values, expand the local tax base, increase tourism, attract and retain businesses, and reduce crime, and whereas the programs that are created and managed by the city's Special Services Department that take place at the Hock, Farmington Hills Community Center, and other facilities throughout the city, all help to build a healthy, active community and positively impact the physical, mental, and emotional health of everyone who participates, and whereas the city's parklands and natural recreation areas enhance the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and enjoy the outdoors. Now therefore be it resolved that Vicki Barnett, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as National Parks and Recreation Month, and encourages all citizens to pursue enjoyment of the outdoors and take part in one of the Special Services Department's many wonderful programs, including cultural arts, golf, archery, aquatics, ice skating, fishing, senior activities, nature center classes, athletics, special events, and more.
Thank you very much. Is Brian Farmer here to receive it?
Yes, he is.
You've done a great job with the Hock and the Trailhead and all kinds of wonderful things around here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is a reminder for all of us to get out and be active. It's important for our health and social well-being that we do get outside. July is the month that we celebrate, but as you read, it's a year-round thing that we should all be active and stay unhealthy. And Farmington Hills provides a lot of different services and programs to be able to do that. So, thank you for supporting us and all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you. For those of you who are in the audience tonight and want to speak during public question and comment, you do not need to fill out a blue form. You will be coming up in the agenda after we have consent agenda and items for consent agenda for discussion. Then we will open it up for public questions and comments. So I want you to be aware that you don't have to fill out any special forms in order to speak before us tonight, and we're looking forward to hearing from you all. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence to report? I think most of us are here to listen to our residents tonight about a variety of emails that we all received that had to do with our police department and diversity and understanding. So, we'll, and that's basically the majority of the emails that we received this week. So, we are aware. Next is consent agenda. The consent agenda will be read by the Mayor Pro Tem. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for additional consideration. So, Councilmember Newland, our Mayor Pro Tem, would you read the consent agenda, please?
The consent agenda is published this evening. Number six, recommend approval of Amendment Number Five to Water Service Contract with Great Lakes Water Authority. This is CMR 62259. Number seven, recommend adoption of revised guidelines for poverty exemption review. This is CMR 62260. Number eight, recommend approval of annual bid waivers and awards for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. This is CMR 62261. Number nine, recommend approval of award of bid for two zero turn riding mowers to wine guards in the amount of $36,350. This is CMR 62262. Number 10, recommend approval award of bid for new handguns for the police department to Acme Sports in the approximate amount of $78,423. This is CMR 62263. Number 11, recommend approval extension of bid for 2022 at needed cash basin stabilization services to Havenir Tech in the amount of $50,000 per year for a two-year period. This is CMR 62264. Number 12, recommend approval of the City Council regular session meeting minutes for June 13th, 2022.
Okay. Are there any discussions?
Mayor, I just have a motion.
Give a motion? Okay.
Yes, I would move the council approve Consent Agenda items six through 11 as read by Mayor Pro Tem Newland.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Councilmember Noel. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there another motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve item number 12 as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, support.
Okay, it's moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Bolowar. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Abstain.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Abstain.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that brings us to public questions and comments. I would ask that you keep your comments as short as possible. If somebody already said what you wanted to say, just please say ditto, and that would be great. We are looking forward to hearing from all of you. Your comments will then be followed probably by a comment from the police department and from the city manager. Do me one favor, and that is to have respect the decorum in this building, and we are all here to get along together and work together toward a brighter future. So, I would appreciate it if we avoid name-calling and any negative comments along the way other than your heartfelt feelings toward any situation you wish to address tonight. So, if anybody wants to come forward for public questions and comments, please do so to the microphone. All you have to do is state your name and the street you live on, not your address, just the street you live on. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Department Heads. Jamie Neufeld, I live in Farmington Hills, down in Glenwild, and lived here for 40 years, raised a family here, three kids went to school here, and yes, I am here to discuss the, what I consider divisive and hateful information that was posted online this last weekend. Over the 40 years, I've gotten to know the police department here. It's obviously one of the best in the region and the state. That's not my opinion. I'm pretty sure that's, it's, you know, that's its, that's fellow officers and law enforcement across the country, you know, hold it in that high esteem. You know, that group is always working in the community, whether it's in the schools, whether it's with this group here. Excellent training as far as, let's talk about active assailant. The house training program that they run for the city is probably second to none. They're in, you know, not only in the city, but in the businesses in the city, some of the schools in the city. They're also teaching stop the bleed throughout the city. They're helping, you know, cardiac arrest constantly, you know, thousands of calls. They're going into fires before the fire department gets there, and they're risking their lives to go get citizens out. So, top-notch department, and, you know, it's, to me, it's pretty scary when you see something like this come out, because in today's day and age, such comments could probably lead, you know, we've seen it across the country, could lead to some pretty drastic actions in this city, you know, to the community and to the police officers themselves. So, hopefully we'll have, you know, a strong showing here of support for the police department, because that's why we're all here. That's why most of us live in this city. It's a safe city. It's a great place to raise a family. I'll probably end up retiring here as well, but I want the folks in the police department to know that we stand behind them, that they do an excellent job, and, you know, and this is the time to stand behind them now, you know. We've seen across the country when something like this happens, you don't want to undermine them. You want to back them up during hard times. So, that's why I'm here, and that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you very much. For those of you who are listening at home that may not know what was going on, there was an incident last week regarding the targets that are used in target practice by the police department as part of their normal training in an accredited police department program. And so, for those of you who may not know, after this was brought to our attention, that there were some concerns, I believe that as a responsible community, the first thing we need to do is to make sure we're doing the right thing and that everything is on the up and up. So, we have an excellent police department in this city, and we have removed the targets that we use for target practice right now, pending not only just a legal review, but a review of surrounding communities and their police departments and how they train to make sure that we are following procedures. We believe we are, but we want to make sure that everybody understands why we do what we do. This is a community that welcomes and wants to include everybody in it. And so, I encourage you to say, to speak your mind, and don't be afraid, because we all want the same thing. We want to live together in harmony and friendship and in peace, and more than that, reach out and really become a neighborhood of neighbors. So, I just wanted to start out with that so that everybody knew what was in my heart and how the council really wants to approach this, and it is in our fervent hope of possibilities that we are all learning together how to be a better society. And we're working through this as you are, and that is our intention. So, back to you, and please just give your name and your street. And again, try to keep it short, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes, good afternoon. My name is Cameron Blunt. I'm actually from Pontiac, Michigan. I'm here to represent in unity with Oakland Forward, with Kermit Williams and a few of my Oakland Forward family here. My question today is how important this is for Farmington, not just for Farmington, but for local government. So, how are y'all addressing this as far as, like, local neighborhoods that don't hear about this with the media? That would be my question.
Okay, well, we're addressing it, as I just said. We have taken the targets down for now, and we're going to, pending a legal review, a legal report, and a report of surrounding police agencies as well. We want to make sure that everybody is together on this, and I don't care if you live in your home and you don't care about this issue. I know you do care about yourself and your neighbors. And our goal is to make sure that we move together as a united community and that we work together and figure out why we do what we do and to make sure that what we do is proper, okay?
Okay.
I don't know if I answered your question fully, but we are going to do a lot of study.
Yes, thank you.
And in the meantime, the targets in question have been pulled down.
All right. Have a blessed day, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Hughes, and I am a resident since 2003 on Wintersett Circle. And I just mostly wanted to express my outrage when I found out that actual images of black men were being used for target practice. I just think that given our, in this country, our troubled history with police brutality and black men, that I just cannot imagine that a police department in 2022 would engage in that kind of behavior, which could lead to a possible bias against its own citizens, black African-American men. I'm glad to hear that the images, that you are not using those images. I see no reason why the police department cannot simply use silhouettes. I see no reason to use any image, whether it's a black man, white woman, or white female or male, or black. We should simply use silhouettes. But I appreciate you taking time to hear what we feel, and I was, again, I was really quite upset when I saw it and heard about it, and thank you, and have a good evening.
Yeah, and our police chief, Jeff King, who is an excellent police chief, will address just that particular question that you asked, why do we not use just simple silhouettes? And I'll leave it up to him to tell you what the M. Coles and the Michigan Chiefs of Police recommend, and so you'll get that information as well, because I think that's important.
I do, too.
But yes, we have taken them down.
I appreciate that.
Yes. Okay, next. Mr. Sweeney?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. How are you this evening?
Fine, how are you?
I am doing well. My name is Michael Sweeney. I live on Mulberry Drive, and most of the City Council knows me as a very active citizen volunteer to the City of Farmington Hills, which you may or may not know is that my family purchased property in 1968 from Farmington Township. So, my memory of this city goes back many decades. But to the point, skipping the other things that have already been raised, I'd like to say, as a volunteer on the different boards and commissions and councils, I have had a chance to work with our public safety officers on many different levels, city open house, Founder Days Festival, things at the school, the school safety officers. To a one, I have found every single one of them to be professional, courteous, friendly, and kind. I can't speak enough for the individuals that serve us here in the City of Farmington Hills, just, they have my unabashed endorsement.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Aw, you brought a little one.
Yes, good evening, honorable body. My name is Dr. Wendy Webster Jackson. I am candidate for 18th District of State of House of, Michigan State of House of Representatives. So, I have a tiny sliver of Farmington, Farmington Hills. However, I'm here today to just discuss that why, I don't know if everyone understands why people are upset. I mean, just because it's a stark image, where I come from the viewpoint of, if you're going to do it, have all images, because I understand you do need to get, you know, a view, you're doing your training, but just don't target one person, because if you target one group of people, it, I believe if you have rookie police officers, as soon as they see that group of, that certain person, a black man in a hoodie or braids, they're going to automatically be on guard and ready to anticipate some type of threat or violence. So, at that point, I say yes, have the Caucasian woman, have the Caucasian man, have an Asian person, because all criminals come in all different shapes, sizes, races, and everything. So, just be fair. I stand for fairness across the board, either have everyone or have no one. I don't want to single out any one person or any one race, because as I have said before, not here, but I have a black son here, and I don't want, if people see him...
Don't kill him, too.
Thank you. I don't want people to see him when he's older and automatically say, oh, he's, he's going to do this, and get their gun and ready to do that. I don't want that. I just want all of our children, regardless of the color, to understand that we are to respect our police officers, and I love ethical, good police. I love it. If I'm in a jam and somebody has me hemmed up, I'm going to call the police, and Farmington would be there in a second, you know? So, I'm not against the police. I appreciate, I respect the police. I teach my children to respect the police, because they are, they help us in times of trouble. So, I just wanted to say that that's why it's hurtful. You know, you just don't want to think that one group of people is targeted by law enforcement. So, that's all I wanted to say, that that's why, and thank you very much, and I'll give the time, okay?
And I appreciate it, and that's why we're going to have the chief address it, because it is a variety of targets. It's not just one color, one ethnic group, and they're not all carrying guns, or some are carrying cell phones, holding a can of beer, holding a stick, you know? It's more complicated than what the immediate reports have been, and our chief is best, is the best one capable of describing how we train. So, yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Oma. I live on Fox Grove Court. Farmington, Farmington Hills was founded about 200 years ago by a Quaker community that valued respecting all individuals equally. Although, in many ways, we live up to those values, Ms. Barnett, what you failed to mention when you said our community was one that values diversity and equity, and all of our community members, is that we are also a town founded in segregation as a sundown town with private parks and private pools meant to allow people to continue their segregated practices following Brown versus the Board of Education. We, as a community, have a history of racial bias and racism. We have a history of institutional racism in our police force and in our schools. We have a problem with institutional racism in our hiring practices. Look, Google it, take a look at our police force and what they look like. They do not reflect our diverse community, and that is infuriating to have many of the community members that sit here with me. We have issues with not respecting all of our community equally. We saw that when those Boy Scouts went down to the basement and saw people that looked like them on targets. We don't need to shoot at lifelike targets. It is done to desensitize police officers to kill humans. That is not something our community values if we are in fact living up to our Quaker roots and respecting all lives. Black lives matter. We need this community to say that together. Black lives matter. I have never been, in all of the meetings that I've ever attended before, had the mayor start a meeting with reminding us to be polite and respectful, because there's something about the community that you see here now that seems to require being reminded that they need to be polite, sit down, and be respectful.
No, that's, excuse me, excuse me.
Ms. Barnett, you didn't interrupt anybody else, and you need to allow me to finish.
I will, but when you start to disparage the council or members here, everybody, I hope, understood that I do this routinely when we have a lot of public comment, asking people on both sides of an issue, whether this is dealing with a road repaving or not a road repaving or rezoning, I ask everybody to be respectful.
I've been in my fair share of meetings, Mayor Barnett, where that has never been the case.
Well, that has been the case since I've been mayor, whether it's a rezoning or whether it's a road project where some residents want it and some others don't. And so, I personally take a slight offense to somebody calling me out for just asking for kindness.
I'm going to ask you to reflect on your audience when you do that. The last thing that I would like to see the council do is, Chief King has come pointedly out and said that there needs to be a review. I ask that the council ensure that that review is independent, and that the independent review is shared with the community at this council in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kermit Williams from Oakland Forward on Saginaw Street. Three things I want to say really quickly. Thank you for removing the targets that were there that clearly upset not only this community, but the entire state of Michigan. I brought along with me some of our young ambassadors who work every day to make black and brown communities better. So, I want them to stand up. If you're here with Oakland Forward, I want you to stand up so you can see some positive black men that are not targets, because that's not the image that was on the news and not the image that the Boy Scouts saw. Y'all can sit down now.
Thank you.
Second thing is, this is a teachable moment, because if it hadn't been discovered, the targets would still remain. And the fact that you took them down after there was news coverage about it shows that there's some inequity in that system. Regardless of what the police chief says at this moment, this city is different because it got exposed. And so, what I would ask, I'm asking that there be some diversity training, and Oakland Forward can help with that, and I would like to allow that to the mayor, the council, the police force, because Farmington Hills is a diverse community, but it can't only be diverse on paper. It has to be diverse in not only word, but deed. And I know they're going to say that we've had some trainings, but clearly not enough, because if the community is outraged by the people that they pay their tax dollars to in order to make sure they're safe, then there's a breach in safety. We asked 100 black men the other day, what can we do to make black men safer? A 17-year-old stood up, and this is what he said, "Create an environment in which I feel safe." What I saw on Fox Two News was not an environment of safety for that young man, and not the men and women in Farmington Hills that look like me. And so, I'm asking, I'm pleading with you guys not to just do this when it's sensational and when the cameras are here, but do the deep, hard work that it takes to change systematic racism and biases that we may not even see on a day-to-day basis, because it's not us, because we have black friends, we have black coworkers, et cetera, et cetera. These images are pervasive. 150 years ago, we've been dealing with this, and we just celebrated Juneteenth last week, and this doesn't feel like a freedom experience. So, I'm asking you to not only search your hearts, but actually create some policies in place and some procedures that you're doing a regular check of what's happening in that basement, not just when it's an issue, not when the Boy Scouts see it, not when it gets discovered, but you're doing the thing systematically to uproot the systematic racism that's been happening in communities like Farmington Hills for far too long. Thank you so much. I know you have a tough job, but please, if there's anything that Oakland Forward can do to help, please let us know.
We will be asking for your help. Thank you.
Mayor, can we ask questions?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Sir, could the last gentleman come back up? I just have a question. Can you list all the other communities that are using these same targets, such as University of Michigan Public Safety, Oak Park, other cities and other types of security training forces throughout the southeastern Michigan? How many of those places is Oakland Forward going into and addressing those targets? Same system?
So, I have 130,000 black and brown people that we deal with on a daily basis. We stopped our canvass today in Auburn Hills to come here to address this at this meeting that I shouldn't have to address. And so, what, hold on, I want to take that. When this is rooted out and saw, we address it in every area. Today is Farmington Hills. Tomorrow, it might be Detroit, it might be Muskegon. We'll go all the way to the upper peninsula if we need to. The issue is not with these targets, it's the question about the imaging, the training, and how you're bringing out to the community. If it wasn't anything wrong with it, the targets would still be up today. And so, the, what you're saying is, we're going to do an independent review, we're going to do a review, and the lady just brought up independent, which is great. The problem is, immediately after those images were saw to all the council, and y'all probably talked about this in closed session...
No, we did not.
But y'all probably had a conversation when y'all saw the news.
No, we did not.
Okay, great. So, I'll say this, and then I'll be done. When it was brought out, you took action to remove the target that looked like me. You may replace that target after the news and after the people... You may replace that target after the news and after the people leave, but remember this day, you took it down because not only were the people outraged, but because it was an expulsion of what was really happening downstairs in the basement. You didn't show a PowerPoint of what's happening with these targets. And hopefully when the chief's police speaks today, he'll show all the images are there and then we can judge as a community what was right or wrong.
Right. So my question was, how many communities have you gone into that use the same system of training with the same targets in the same system?
You tell me how many cities are using it. Because you're, you're asking me. I'm not using this system. I'm not shooting at black people.
Okay. So that was my question. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Just your street name, yeah.
Pro-Tim and city council members. My name is James McQueen. I am from Pontiac as well and a member of Oakland Forward. I was very, very disheartened today when I heard about the incident in the news about the targets. I am a proud Army Desert Storm veteran and I can tell you at no point during my training for that task was there ever images of anyone. So I am hoping that this community will wrap its arms around how we feel and make a better choice. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Clark. I am a police officer here in Farmington Hills. I am a black police officer here at Farmington Hills. I have spent the last 36 years of my life being a cop, whether it be here in Detroit or whether it be here in Farmington Hills. I am very proud of the Farmington Hills Police Department and all the training that I have been given. I have never been trained to shoot at any particular race, gender, age, or anything of this nature. The reason that many targets, various targets are used is to work through what everyone has is an implicit bias. Officers have a split second to make a decision in a deadly force situation in which to act properly. If I am only training to look at one particular demographic, then that is what, how I will react. If I do not train to react to all, then my reaction may be improper for all. The targets that have been used are gray, white, and black. I haven't seen color in any of the targets that I've used. It hurts me to see such divisiveness because this has been brought up. I've worked very hard here in Farmington Hills and in Detroit as well because I understand and I have felt the feeling of negative, negative feelings between the police and African-Americans or people of color. So I've worked very hard and the members of the Farmington Hills Police Department as well as Detroit, worked very hard to be completely equitable in dealing with all. It hurts to see such, such divisiveness when we have been trying our best to come together. I love this community. That's why I chose it to work. It needs, it needs work like everything needs work, but it only is gonna get better with open communication. When issues come about and issues are brought without going to the head to try to figure them out before they are sent to media, no disrespect to media, because you have a job as well. But many issues can be worked out through simple communication, whether that be communication from the police department to its citizenry or whether it be from the citizens to the police department or any board or any organization, municipal organization. This job is not easy by any means. It's amazing to me how over years I've observed people get very upset over something that they've heard until they become a victim. When they become a victim, they want everything done for them because it's emotional. My issue is this. You have to have empathy and you have to have sympathy and you have to do your very best, including the police department, to communicate and find out exactly what happened. That's what investigations are about. I ask the citizens to investigate. I ask the citizens to give a chance for explanation. That's all I have.
I have a question for Mr. Clark.
I just first want to say thank you. Thank you for your service to our community. You are an example of our police officers in Farmington Hills. And I think the thing that you are bringing up that hurts me and our department the most is that when those targets were found, nobody picked up the phone to call me and ask me what our targets look like and why. Nobody asked me what is the meaning behind the kinds of targets we used and are they accredited and do other police departments use them? Yes, they do, including Troy. Nobody called me to find out how many other targets were put up and what colors those were. Nobody called the chief of police to ask. Nobody who had that press conference, nor did the press, called any of us to get an opinion, a comment, answer a question for us to investigate, and instead it hit the rumor mill. And you, coming in today with your 36 years of service and your 36 years of training and being at an accredited and re-accredited police department in one of the safest cities in the nation are truly, truly an example of what great community policing is all about. And we are all trying to get every one of our officers to be you. And you've done an excellent job. And I thank you for coming out today and making that point because what you folks don't know is we were never contacted. We heard it the same way many of you heard it, through innuendo and phone calls. And that's not how we grow together as a community and that's not how we're gonna solve our problems if we all come in with preconceived notions of what happened when none of us know exactly what happened. So I thank you very much. And Michael, Councilmember Bridges, please go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Officer Clark. Thank you for being here today.
Yes, sir.
I'm partly responsible for his presence here today. I met Officer Clark downtown Detroit several, about eight, nine years ago, right? When we met down there, I walked up to you at a, I think it was a jazz festival or something like that.
Correct.
Inquired about your interests and coming to Farmington Hills to be a police officer. That was part of my efforts to help diversify our police force.
Yes, sir.
And I continued that effort as I, on my tenure as a councilperson. I want to ask you a question, a hypothetical question regarding, you mentioned about these targets and, and regarding how representative they are across the region, I don't know. I haven't seen any data. We can provide anecdotal information, all that we want. I want to see data that says that they're using these type of targets. So until I've provided data to support that, I cannot affirm I believe in that point of view. What I want to ask you is that if you have an officer you're, that you're working with and he or she has bias, if people of color, and they're using targets like that, what is proposed to be the impact of that person?
Well, because you know, you and I know bias does exist in this country. This country has a history of racial insensitivity issues across this country. And the police department or any police department or any organization across this country is not exempt from that, including our police department. So we're talking about a person in your department that is target training with that type of image in front of them all the time and he has some racially biased type points of view. What's your view or what impact that will have on that particular officer? My view on that officer is that he's been through the same training I have. And that training is that I have never had to use a target of any color. The targets are black, white, and gray. The only reason they are gray is to give officers a chance to have an understanding of night shooting or low light shooting and daylight shooting. An officer who I am working with and I feel has a bias toward any particular race, any ethnicity, economic differences, gender bias, they have to work through that. Part of the working through that is to work through their implicit bias. And that is by training to deal with everybody and not just one group. I have never shot at a target that was all black people or depicted all black people or all white people. In all honesty, it's been mostly white people, targets that I have shot at. And the reason I say that they are white is because of the physical, the physical.
Characteristics.
Thank you. The physical characteristics of the image, but the images are not colored. So that's how I understand it. I have biases and because I've been trained on various target characteristics, it has helped me work through my implicit bias so that I can properly react should a deadly force situation arise.
So have you, did you, did you actually do target training with this black person being a target?
No, I have not here.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Officer Clark, first off, thank you for your distinguished service.
Sorry, it's kinda hard to hear.
Oh, thank you for your distinguished service in this community and Detroit as well. With the targets, would you say that these targets actually teach restraint? Because let's say that a target of a particular color is holding a cellphone instead of a gun and it's presented quickly to an officer. That that officer has to learn to get rid of that bias because of what he thinks that person might actually hold when they're holding something that isn't lethal and can be mistaken for a gun. So those targets actually help teach restraint? Would you agree with that?
I agree with that, but I will go back to what I said before. It helps you work through what you're talking about, which is your implicit bias. Just because you see it in the media or you see it on TV, movies, whatever, that does have a bearing on our everyday life. As officers, as first responders or whatever, even as council people, it is important that you work through your implicit bias and you get past that and you deal with an individual not colored, not sex, not race, not economic issue, but just the issue.
It takes them beyond that.
It takes them beyond that. It helps get them past that because you don't have a choice. You have to work past that.
Right. And those targets do that job?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we get the same training, which is why you have scenarios in the academy. You have scenarios of various people doing various things to see and train you on various things that you may face once you get out into your police force and out on the street.
Excellent. Thank you.
Point of clarification, did, in your target training, did you shoot at a black image?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
You haven't used the same targets that we're talking about.
No, I have not used those targets in Farmington Hills.
Okay.
What we have used is the Milo training, which is a computer-generated training. That is kind of like a real live training that gives you a scenario and you have to react properly. In that training, there are actors of all various demographics that are doing different things. You have to properly react to those, whether it be a deadly force situation or whether it be, or whether it is not a deadly force situation. And some of the things that I think you, you brought up, Mr. Bruce, whether someone had a cellphone, whether someone has a bottle, whether someone, whether someone is mentally unstable or having a manic episode at that point. We are training to deal with that and not just go to deadly force with all demographics being covered.
And how many deadly force shootings have there been in Farmington Hills?
I have no idea.
Zero, I believe.
I, I, I don't think there's anyone been killed.
Right.
Yes, sir. I don't know and I'm thankful for that because I don't want to be the one to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Massey, did you have a?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Officer Clark, thank you for your presentation here and all the work that you do on behalf of the citizens of this community. I just, there's a lot of talk about these targets. And I just want, and there, it was portrayed, this has kind of been selectively picked to indicate that these targets are demonstrating images of black suspects or images of black individuals. Let's put, and I, I went and checked on the numbers and Officer Clark, you alluded to it, I think Mr., Dr. Bruce did as well, but just for real numbers, there are 2,300 different images. 2,300 images. Of those 2,300 images, 185 have an image of a black person on them. This has been selectively picked out to make it look like, whatever the discussion is here, that there, that it's much more biased than it is. That's 8%. Of those 185, only a small portion of them are holding a weapon, a gun, a knife. The others are holding cell phones and so forth. And then all of the other images are the same way. And it is part of the training of our officers to make quick decisions to understand this. So I just wanted to set with actual numbers that we're not talking about lots of images and a focus on this. This is really a really small piece that somebody picked up and then selectively downloaded those because if you look at what the training purposes are in the actual numbers, it doesn't seem to be as big a problem. Nobody's targeting individuals. So I just wanted to put those numbers out there as we keep talking about images and targets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Hello. Hello. Mayor Barnett and the council, my name is Latricia Hempell. I'm a resident of Farmington Hills. I've been here for maybe 22-plus years. And one of the concerns that I'm having right now, particularly based off of the statement that Officer Clark just made, is that the images are black, white, and gray and that they are not necessarily that of people of color. And based off of the information that we all have received via media and emails, the parent of the, of one of the Boy Scouts that came to visit the police station and in the basement where they do the target practicing, she actually took the photos of what she saw. And what I see here is basically, these are actually black men in hoodies and they're holding guns and they're actually images of black men. They're not black, gray, or white. So one of the things that I want to say tonight is if we want to move forward as a community that embraces each and everyone, we need to first be honest, transparent, and be real. If this is happening, the first thing you do is you own it. And when you own it, you're able to deal with it. But when you hide behind it and lie about it, then it becomes a problem and we as a community don't trust any of you. So moving forward, please, let's not lie to the community. Let's be honest with the community and fair. And that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do. When we took these down, I owned it. That was my call and I, obviously, the council is supportive of taking those down right now and we're gonna do a full investigation and you will be aware of all those steps. So none of us up here are trying to hide. None of us had a private meeting. We didn't have round robin phone calls. We take the Open Meetings Act very seriously as we take our residents very seriously. So we are patiently listening and we are doing our best to follow through and to come through this together as a community that understands one another and is not hiding anything in, in dark closets because it's not proper. Everything should have. Everything should have sunshine on it and that is our goal. So I, I appreciate your comments.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Joseph Williams. I live in Waukesha. Our was true, as like most of the people here, deeply disturbed by the message that I received regarding these, these images of black people on the target practice. I'm a CPL holder. I've been that way for almost 20 years now. And I've been to different ranges, whether it be Detroit, Roale Oak, Livonia, you name it. And never have I been witness ever had a, rented or even seen on a wall a target that depicted a black person. So I take issue with that question and I take issue with the fact that you said that it was just a few targets, that maybe it was a selective few, what have you. And I noticed that she had an assortment of different targets that were, they could have, they could have picked from. I'm saying all to say this because as adults and as people who are in power, we need to think before we speak because social imaging and messaging is very important. When you put something out there, it's difficult to take it back. In words, you can take it back, but the damage is already done. And the culture that we're in right now, where the world has gone ra, gone rapid, we more so you need to be think, be conscious of what we do and what we say because things are not like they used to be anymore. We're in a different time zone now. We are, I, I, we know what we're talking about. You know what I'm talking about. There's, there's a race barrier going on right now among this, among the nation. The nation is up in the uproar about a lot of things right now. So we as a small community need to be very self-conscious of the messaging we put forth in our community, the messaging we're sending out to the community. Because guess what? We're all taxpayers too. When we send our money in, it don't have no, ain't got but one color, green, right? But when we, but we work and get it in, we do our best to bring it to you. So we want to be treated as fairly and equal as everyone else. So when I got the message, I talked to my youngest son, who was about 25. And I said, well, you know, it looks like they may be targeting young men 18 to 25 because the imaging of those individuals are about that same age bracket. Very disturbing. And so I told him, I said, well, Daddy go to range. I don't see that. I just see a silhouette of a guy, big guy, little guy, thin guy, whatever. We shoot, we train to shoot with center mask. It doesn't matter what the imaging looks like to determine what you need to do to shoot that person. I did, I did, I take back on that. That's not going to prepare me either or. If I, if it's a threat to me, I'm going to resolve the threat the best way I know how. But does, regardless of what kind of picture it is, the picture means nothing in that respect there. But the messaging that we put in the, in the range for our police officers, when we know the climate that we're involved in around the world and we hear about black lives and not being mattered, who are we getting shot? Black people, black kids, young people, 18, 25, 35 people getting killed unarmed. So we need to really embrace that and work hard in this community to make sure that we don't become a, a, a person or a community that's feathered, that is involved in that kind of practice, okay? I'm glad you took it down, okay? It's unfortunate that it had to be there. Somebody, someone didn't think before they spoke. Somebody, someone didn't need to take enough time to realize the messaging you're putting out. We're a diverse community. Why would you put some of that anywhere in any building for any particular reason for anybody to see, knowing that it has a pushback? It has a consequence. You have to think from the police department, from the mayor, nothing but intended, down to the janitor. We got to think, okay? You can't get a pass on this. This can never happen again, never. Because we want to change, turn the page and be better today, tomorrow than what's today. We want to think before we do these things again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Hello.
City Council, my name is Tula Cabana with a radio show called Real Talk with Tula Cabana, Hip-Hop Esthetic and ADT. First of all, I want to say, man, you know, the black community, we respect the police, right? So anytime we come out, and it's always still typical for us, when we criticize the police, you know, the, the, the image is, we hate the police. No, we don't hate the police. We had bad police, right? And, and when I, you know, I grew up in the South, right? So I seen racism in the raw, right? I remember eight, when I was eight years old, me and my grandfather was riding in a car, we pull up next to the Ku Klux Klan collecting money. So I've been called the N-word so much in the South, I thought that was my first name. I experienced racism in the school. I had teachers make disparaging remarks to me as a black man, right? I was intensely undereducated in the school system that didn't value black students, but I was valued on the sports field. So I'm speaking as a black person, right? And I ask people who, who tend to think that racism's okay or i, we just going to sweep it on the rug, who want to trade places with me? For one day, one day. It's hard being a black man in America, right? And it's, it's nobody's fault and we're not saying that all white people are racist. We can study history of America. No, that's not true. The abolitionists, those who helped us with the railroads, we can study the Quakers, Leo Alouza who died in the 1960s. So let's not make this a narrative of us against them. No, it's right against wrong. Black people didn't create racism. That's not our problem. That's a human problem. So why do we always have to shoulder the burden of explaining why we're talking about issues that affect us? 1860, December, January the 1st, 1863, emancipation, emancipation, right? June 19th, 1865, we was free. Right after we were so-called free, they created the Black Codes, another form of incarceration. Then went from the Black Code, Codes to Jim Crow. Then from Jim Crow to Separate But Equal. And what we dealing with now, 2022, we still dealing with racism. So the issue ain't taking the images down. The issue is people embracing the fact that apple pie and racism is synonymous in America. And we need to address racism. People are uncomfortable when you talk about racism. I talk about racism with my white friends all the time. And I say, it's okay. We all sometimes are taught implicit biases, but it's not our fault. Subconsciously, this is how our country was built. So black people got biases too, but it's a reaction to being powerless after being oppressed by white people, right? And I have to tell my black friends, it's not cool to hate. And, and we say these things secretly. So when we come up here and speak about the images, images is everything, right? And we know this psychologically. Psychiatrist teaches this, right? It's certain things you're not going to allow your children to, to see. Facebook shows that, right? The first thing they say, we don't want them to see these type of, so why is it appropriate for black Boy Scouts to go on a, a tour at a police station and see images of black men being targeted, right? And I want to say this, let me put this out here. I respect Officer Clark, but he's a police officer. So naturally, he's not going to get treated the same way as a black man that's not a police officer. Let's, let's be real about this. When you reach certain level of status in America and you fit the status quo of what they call the system, they're not going to harm you. They're going to harm somebody like Tyrone walking around with a durag who don't have a felony. They're going to hide certain things from him. So he don't speak for me as a black man. He speak for himself and his way he's dealing with life. And I say that with respect. And I respect his service as well because I can only imagine what it's like being in that position as a police officer, right? I'm not saying it's not hard, but what we ask for is simple fairness. White children, white males are not taught how to act when they get pulled over by the police. Black men are. White males aren't victim of police brutality at the level of black men. Black men are. White males aren't being choked up like George Floyd for nine minutes and said, mama, mama. That's black men. Black men, white men are not being shot in the back of the head after being thrown on the ground and justified. That's black men. And we always trying to sweep it on the rug and justify, you can't justify. Sometimes you got to say, wrong is wrong and right is right, right? That's the God gospel. You know, everybody want to talk about Jesus, but nobody want to do what Jesus said do, right? And this, this is real, right? So, so what I'm saying is, with Mayor, I love you, but allowing us to have this open forum, some people is afraid to even do this, right? And I just want to say thank you, but I, I just want to say, the images would not change the mindset of the people, right? You can take all the, we've been taking images down since we've been in America. Racism still exists. We've been having diversity training. Racism still, it has to be consequences for behavior, right? If you show this, then that's what it is. You had Officer Clark said, he, okay, but they're not going to tell you they racist? There's a difference between the North, the North and the South. The fox has, I mean, the, the wolf is in the South, right? They tell you they don't like you. Up here, they hide it, right? That's the fox. And those who associate with people who's racist, that's white and non-white, you have to tell your, call them out. Call them out. You white, wrong white people, say, hey, you know what? Your, your behavior is incorrect and I want to correct you. You're not going to display that type of behavior around me because it leads to stuff like this.
Yes.
And, and you know, so I want to say, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity, but let's not forget those children, those black children who seen those images.
Any child.
Any child. Because this, I would just want to say this, what I always say, it's a lengthy test to morality. Would you want to be in my shoes? Secondly, if they would have been Jewish, would you have those images up? Of course you wouldn't.
Well, I, I happen to be Jewish.
Well, I'm just saying.
And that was, that was the first thing I said. If I saw, if I saw them shooting at a man with a pheas and a black hat, my people, I would have felt the same way, horrified.
I understand.
So I, I, that's, so I agree with you. And, and your five minutes is up and I actually let you go six and a half.
Thank you.
But, but you were speaking actually my heart and I really appreciate what you had to say.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right.
Good evening.
Thank you for recognizing that Jewish people are good too. Appreciate it.
Yes, good evening.
I just need your name and your street.
Yes, my name is Mark Fancher. I'm the staff attorney for the Racial Justice Project of the ACLU of Michigan. And we're here to suggest ending the use of targets with any racial characteristics. And the reason for that is that during a recent hearing on the events of January 6th, a black ballot counter testified that among many other threatening messages she had received was one that suggested she be relieved that we are in the 2020s rather than the 1920s. It was a clear reference to that period in our history when white vigilante mobs routinely lynched more people of African descent than the scholar W.E.B. Du Bois could document. As we look back on that period and the fact that often entire towns, including small children, would turn out to watch a black man set ablaze and burned alive, or in other cases to watch them hanged by the neck after the victim's genitals were severed and stuffed down their throats, we wonder at what caused such mass depravity. And much of it was the product of social conditioning. White society had been trained in countless ways to believe in not only the inherent criminality and dangerousness of African people, but also in the virtue of hating black people to a degree that killing them was regarded as noble. While many would like to believe that society has progressed and such violence no longer occurs, I respectfully suggest that it continues. The perpetrators may not always be civilian mobs, but there are individuals who have engaged in racist violence. And certainly, the public has become aware in recent years of the chronic pattern of murders committed by law enforcement officers. For those who challenge the analogy between police violence and lynching, consider that in 2012, a homeless 49-year-old black man named Milton Hall was surrounded by more than half a dozen Saginaw police officers who fired more than 40 rounds of ammunition at him in firing squad style. Consider Patrick Loyoya, who was straddled by a white Grand Rapids police officer who placed the barrel of his gun against the skull of this immigrant from Congo and pulled the trigger. Farmington Hills may not yet have experienced an act of police violence of this kind, but the use of photographs of a black man on the gun range is the type of psychological conditioning that, as in the 1920s, promotes within the police department culture, a shared conviction subconsciously, if not consciously, that black men are inherently criminal and dangerous. And when confronted by one, the response is to shoot them dead rather than attempt to de-escalate a tense encounter. In light of the circumstances, we strongly urge that the following be done. One, that there is an investigation that confirm that these black targets were used and it seems that there's ample evidence, as my sister before showed photographs. In the interest of accountability, identify the individual or individuals who are responsible for this and let the public know. Require the police department to make a commitment to using targets with racially and socially indistinguishable features going forward, specifically using only bullseye targets and silhouettes. Arrange for appropriately credentialed professionals to conduct interviews with officers on the force about their racial attitudes and why there were no objections to the targets by department personnel at any level. Someone in the department should have been sensitive enough to sound an alarm. The fact that nobody saw a problem with this is concerning. And require the officers receive training to help them understand why there is concern about this matter, given the historical and racial context in which it occurs. Their officer, thereafter, officers who demonstrate that they don't get it need to be removed from the police force. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Barnett.
Yes, Mr. Bridges.
Can we, the, what's your position again? You're regional director of, I'm sorry.
I'm the staff attorney for the Racial Justice Project of the ACLU of Michigan.
Excellent. Can we get his comments on the recommendation, you know, that, that he's outlined? I mean, I'm not saying we want to adopt them, but we should look at those recommendations and.
We can look at them, sure.
Appreciate that.
I'd be happy to submit them and write it.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mayor.
Coleman Burns.
Reverend Dr. Patricia Coleman Burns.
So many names.
So many, and so much history. We don't have time. I would spend all my time telling you why my last name is hyphenated. I, I want to thank the community for coming out. The first thing I want to say is the concept of gaslighting must be addressed. Gaslighting is when those who are being challenged manipulate the situation to make the people feel like we are insane. The spirit of the folk that are speaking is sufficient in and of itself. There should be no questioning. It should be listening. We should not gaslight community members, number one. Because I wasn't going to get up here. Number two, the first lesson in diversity, the first lesson in listening to anyone that's harmed or hurt is to listen to them. Don't question it. You didn't feel that. You, oh, it wasn't that bad. It was that bad for the people who experienced it. That's the first lesson. You know, I'm going to say two or three more things. One, we need a diversity officer in this, in this city. We must have because the knowledge and the information from 40 years ago is not going to get us to where we need to go going into the future. I'm going to say this. Much of what is going to be said is what is the standard practice in police force and law enforcement. Algorithms. And I'm going to say right now that seatbelt laws were passed years ago because if you wore them, you would be safe. Come to find out, that was measured on the 62 percentile that the rest of us were dying, babies, women, pregnant women, and the laws changed. The other example I want to give is my watch, my Apple Watch. I had been in a study that takes and measures electrocardiogram. Wouldn't measure it. Couldn't come up with the doc. Apple sent me a message about a month ago saying, what color are you? I said, I'm this color. You know why? Because the LED lights could not measure dark-skinned people. The same thing with the oxygenation meter, having so much trouble during COVID, measuring the oxygen levels in black, dark-skinned people. What am I saying? I'm saying systemic racism, not individual biases. It's built into the water. It is systemic. We must change the algorithms. We must change the standards by which we operate. It is not just enough to deal with individual biases. We have systemic issues. And therefore, I do thank you for having this opportunity to listen to the voices of the people. The people feel something real. It is real. It should not be ignored. It should not be, it should not be wiped away with, well, here's the standard of what is done across the United States. Gone are those days. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Milk Two More. My street is Notting Wood on, in Farmington Hills. And I just want to say that I've, I've listened to every, all the comments everybody said and everybody had something to say. That's why we all here. Now, as a young man growing up in Detroit, Now, as a young man growing up in Detroit, I was a victim of racial profiling every week. Every day I left my home, I was pulled over for nothing. And I mean absolutely nothing. Oh, well, you know, we saw your taillight dangling, and we thought maybe you had robbed a bank. Really? And that one inches, it's a whole lot, I'm just going to tell you about this. So I said, Officer, I don't have any tickets. I don't have any warrants. He had where I worked, where I lived, and everything. I said, once again, run my plate, run my license. Have a seat in your car. I'm going to find something. He held me in detainment for 45 minutes with his gun like this. Now, when it comes to those particular targets, I want everyone within the sound of my voice that is not a person of color. Imagine just for a few minutes, going down to that basement where those targets were held and seeing your family members on those targets, because that's how everybody of color feel about that. Those people are family members that are being shot at for no reason. And to say that it's a practice that is a practice throughout, you know, the cities or whatever, that's not the point. The point for me is, who in their right mind had the audacity to say, let's post these up of black people? Whoever, and I'm not targeting anyone, however, I will say, whoever that person was, not only needs to listen to us as a whole and to the panel as a whole, but that person needs to be held accountable. There should be no slack. There should be nothing else that person can say, because what that person did was something that was apprehensible to everyone out here right now. Because no one, no culture should have targets for police officers to shoot at in a training atmosphere. No one. No one deserves that. I don't care what color you are. That's why they ought to be silhouettes. That's why they call them silhouettes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. How y'all doing? Stephen Kennedy, proud resident of Pontiac, proud former resident of Farmington Hills, Herndonwood, on Herndonwood when it was not paved, 12 Mile and Inkster. To prove my Farmington Hill-ness, I have a cousin who has won a state championship at Harrison High. I have a sister who has the 200 record at Harrison High, was a county champion. So I've lived in Farmington Hills from the 90s to the mid 2000s. So I still consider myself somewhat of a resident, proud resident. So I say that because I know we have a lot of people from our-
You're a hawk. We welcome you.
Thank you. But I know we have a lot of people who come from outside the community because of the news story, things of that nature. And I can understand being a resident here and having someone from the outside trying to tell you what to do in your city, and I can see that. And I understand that. But this issue here, I think it's bigger than Farmington Hills. And I can say this before I forget. The one good thing about this thing, this issue, is that I'm sure all the other cities in this area, and cities who heard this story, went downstairs in their basement and checked what their images looked like. That's the good thing that comes out of this story. Okay? So whether we point fingers and blame each other, and this good sister here told my thunder, as they say, you know, the main thing, well, one of the things, the issues I had a problem with when I sat there was, I guess, the council's defense of it, of the action that they, you know, that they made, that I'm pretty sure probably misrepresented on, you know. But being a black man and being in America, as they say, you know, you want someone to listen to you. So when you come back and you challenge the other brother here, his credentials and things of other communities, we call that what-aboutism. Troy does it. Oak Park does it. Doesn't make it right. You know, Farmington Hills has the opportunity to be a trendsetter here, you know? They have the opportunity to say, hey, we own it, as the mayor said, congratulations, and we're going to move forward from this point on. But hear the pain from the community. They're not targeting any individual person. Just hear the pain from the community and don't have a rebuttal. You know what I mean? Just listen to them. Take it in, because we're dealing with, some of these people are dealing with 400 years of pain, whether they've been here 400 years or not. But it's years and years of it. And as the good sister says, she's a Jewish sister, I'm pretty sure you have trauma that you may not actually dealt with, but through family history and lineage, you know things of that nature.
Yes.
So just, I mean, just take it in, listen to the people. And when someone comes from outside in the community to speak on it, don't be offended by it, because the issue is bigger than Farmington Hills. And I commend you for having this open forum. I commend the police. I love the police. When I'm in trouble, when I need help, I want the police to help me. Okay? But like the other brother said, I don't like bad police. And I don't think anybody liked the bad police. But as a black man, as a young brother coming home from college from Southern University and being at the 7-Eleven on 12 Mile, where it used to be right here next to the mobile gas station on 12 Mile and Middle Belt, you know, and having the police pull up behind you real aggressively and get out and have a rough interaction, that's my experience. That'll make all the police bad, but that was my experience. And I know that happened because of who I was and how I look. Can't no one tell me any different. But that's okay. I mean, I hate the police. That don't mean I don't need their help, but I just like the good police. God bless all y'all.
Vice President of the School Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Angie Smith, and if I may, I would not like to give my street, if that's okay, due to my position as an elected official. I am not only a community member of the past 25 years here, I am also a member of the Farmington Public Schools for the past six years. So I don't envy you tonight. I've done this. And we're done for this month, well, we finished this month. But what I'm here to say is thank you to all of you for your service as our mayor, our pro tem, and our city council members, as you sit before here today and deal with a difficult issue. I have sat in this seat as have you, dealing with issues in our schools. Our schools were mentioned in the email that went out in the press conference, which was a shock to us as well as school leaders. What I'd like to tell this community, because we do have a lot of outsiders here today, we do have an open door policy with our mayor, our city council members on both sides, as well as with our city managers. We also have a mayor from Farmington here as well. I don't just have that accessibility because I'm an elected official. I have had it since I've been here for 25 years. Yes, this situation is heart-wrenching and hurtful. But at the end of the day, we have to acknowledge that this was not mentioned to none of you. You had no recollection that this was going on. As we as school board members, we don't know everything that goes on either in all of our buildings. But you are acknowledging what is going on, and you are taking the opportunity to address it, and I applaud you for it. For Officer Clark, who has been one of the best officers in our community by working in our schools and working with our students. We have a great relationship with our police officers in our schools with our children. We can't look at the police as the boogeyman. I am not only an African-American woman, but I am also Cherokee Indian and Latino. And I also have an Irish grandfather. Don't ask, because my father came from West Point, Mississippi. So with that being said, I learned to speak English at the age of seven years old. So at the end of the day, Officer Clark made some very good ballot points, but it was said that he might be looking different than others. He wears that uniform maybe 40 hours out of the day. So when he walks out and he's in his civilian clothes, he too is a black man. We can't just look at Farmington as part of the problem. This is nationwide. But we have our city council members and our mayor that is listening to each and every one of us. As a matter of fact, Chief King started the first police academy for civilians. And yes, I'm in that, and I sit on that. Do I have sometimes some doubts and say, well, hey, why is this? And that class has taught me a lot. It has taught me why an officer puts their hand a certain way. It has taught me why certain things have happened in our community. And yes, I too am a licensed carrier. I've been carrying for a very long time, not just Louis Vuitton purses and Chanel bags, but I carry a real, and I'm a good shot. So at the end of the day, let's keep it real. This is not just Farmington's problem. As a school board member, we have started a DEI program. Many of you may have seen our meeting on January 11th, where we had people come out and turn up because of thinking that we're teaching CRT, which we don't. But we got together and we got people to come out. We had a 21-day equity challenge. But what people don't understand, this city council is working hard to find the possibility to help what we need here in this community. So like my grandmother used to always say, there's three sides to a story. Your side, their side, and the truth. Not saying what went down was not the truth, but they are working to fix this for each and every one of us. I've had the police at my house just the other day because somebody's shooting bullets and arrows. They didn't come out there and treat me like whatever. I've had incidents which, I've had a squirrel fall in my convertible. Police pulled over and helped me. I choked on a peppermint. The police stopped and helped me. I've not had any problems with this police department. But are they looking into this matter? Yes, they are. So let's work together to help them help us, because we wouldn't be here today if there would have been some communications, not only to our city council members, but to our police chief, and yes, to me. I got an open door policy. Just don't call me before nine o'clock. So at the end of the day, I thank you all. Thank you for your service, each and every one of you. Stay safe. To our chief, to our police officers, thank you. Thank you for everything that you are doing to get behind this. Not behind it, in front of it. And also to our mayor that is also in the audience, Sarah Baumann in Farmington. They're working on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank, does anybody else have anything to say? I think we've heard a lot, and this is a very tough situation, and we're not trying to gaslight anybody. What you feel is real. The anger you feel is real. Your disappointment is real. And we acknowledge that. And I don't have all the answers personally, but we're working on it. And that's, we're giving it the best we can do, one day at a time. And I assure you, we don't want to hide anything from you. You are more a part of this community than you know. And if we can't keep our community happy, then we're not doing our jobs. So every one of you has an important point to make, and we have heard it, and we are working on it, and I just want to assure you of that. I now want to ask the chief of police to come up, because I think it's important that the chief and our city manager also weigh in a little bit so that they can tell you what we're doing and the other side of, not the other side of a story, but the other half of the truth that may or may not upset you. I don't know, but we are working hand in hand with our community, you folks, and the beloved community, as well as the AME Church, and through our police chief, who is, I think, doing an excellent job and has owned this issue as well, and thank you. And after this, we're going to take a short break, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Gary Mechon. I'm your city manager. If you have not met me personally, I welcome you to stop by City Hall and introduce yourself. Maybe you see me on the Farmington Focus on a monthly basis if you check our website. And I just want to, you know, give you a little bit of background about myself. I'm a product of this city. Parents moved in in 1958, and I'm a product of this public school system. I am you. I am Farmington Hills. I want everybody in this room to know that. We take pride in the diversity of this community. It's why almost 30 years ago, at the direction of our city council, we started a multicultural, multiracial committee. I don't know if everybody in the room knows that. That was very cutting-edge at the time. And why is that? And why did council decide to create that committee? It's because we had many different people of many different cultures from around the world moving to this community. Why? Because it's a world-class city. That's why we live here. That's why you live here. And you want to be a part of that, and we want you to be a part of that. Our commitment to diversity and equity and inclusion is a primary reason, and chief will talk about this, of why we recreated and reinstated the police cadet program. Budget cuts forced us to eliminate that during the downturn in 08 and 09. And what had happened was, we were left to the academies to draw from whatever came out of those academies and compete for those police officers, excuse me, across all the departments in the region. The cadet program will help us grow our own folks with a bent towards diversifying our workforce to reflect everybody in the community. It's also why, chief, and was mentioned earlier, why he created the Citizens Police Academy, to work with our residents, to be very transparent and open for our residents to understand how we police this community. We are very transparent to police department. I'm not just saying that because I'm the city manager. I've worked in four different municipalities. This police chief and this city council and this city administration is absolutely dedicated to transparency to all of our residents. It has to be. We serve all of you. We serve every citizen and every taxpayer in this community. It's vital. We're proud of the efforts that we've implemented. We know we've got a lot of work to do. It was mentioned before. Constant forward momentum, constant improvement. And we must do that to ensure our government recognizes and reflects our diverse community. It takes time. It takes time to do that. What you haven't heard, you've heard about the school system's diversity, equity, and inclusion program. We are in the very formation, early stages of developing our own DEI effort. And we've been working with our consultant, who's in the room today, Darlene Kang, to help us walk through that. Again, we're in very early stages of doing that work, and we have a commitment to continue to do that work. Lastly, when we get to the point where we're ready to share that effort with the community, we will, and we will be open, and we will be transparent with that program and how we intend on implementing it. And I've used this analogy before. This building that we're in, previous city manager, previous city council, the intent was to show that Farmington Hills is a sustainable community, environmentally, socially, and that's what this building represents. It is an automatic response by our staff. Everything we do is to further the sustainability to those efforts. Our DEI effort will be no different, and you have my commitment on that. So with that, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to turn it over to Chief King. So with that, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to turn it over to Chief King. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Mechin, city officials and leaders, most importantly, our community. And before I, I get into my prepared remarks, I will say this. Nothing hurts me more than any kind of a negative impact, not only on our, our police department, but our community. Because in Farmington Hills, we are one community. We're not a police department and a, and a citizenry. We are a community. Those of you that know me, know my leadership, know my officers, know that. I'll take this one on the chin. I apologize to each and every person in this room, this community, my department, my city council, my city manager. I can't overlook this. But I promise you this. This will make us stronger. This will make us better. This will make us more transparent. And this community overall will come out better for this. The Farmington Hills Police Department, as does our city, values the community's willingness to come out here today, or tonight, to ask about questions of city operations, the police department, including recent concerns raised in this target practice procedures in our basement. We encourage residents to bring these issues to our attention in the future. We simply ask one thing. We ask that they be brought to us so we can gather appropriate information, address such matters in a comprehensive and transparent fashion. Bringing such matters to a city gives us the opportunity to provide context regarding our practices, procedures, and our decisions while giving those concerned, our, our community, critical information about the process. My focus here tonight is to only bring greater context and perspective to what occurred during that night in April, and to our practices that we do each and every day on our training and in our department. To be clear, the targets we order and use every day are consistent with the parameters of the MCOs, which is the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. Contrary to sub, to some assumptions by our visitors, the cutouts in the practice area were intended to represent a mix of both threat and non-threat targets. The difference between a threat assessment target and a silhouette target is threat assessment targets allow you to identify if a threat is there. A silhouette target is only for target acquisition. Our targets consist of a mix of genders and race and are shown holding a variety of items. That includes a handgun, a knife, a soda pop can, a cellphone, a radio, a badge, and so on. Having a mix of these non-threat and threat targets in an active training situation is the preferred method to train officers and prepare them to make a split-second decision when it comes to a life-saving, life-taking, or non-threat situation. I cannot overstress the gravity of these accusations. A transparent conversation about this situation will only serve to strengthen our relationship with our citizens and build further trust in our community, bearing in mind the significant emotional impact that this could have on our community. Our agency's commitment to partner with our citizens, and in response for our reverence for the citizens and community concerns we have, we have ordered the following. We've conducted an immediate review of the information when we were notified of it, various social media, media reports, and event discussions from the Southfield Event on the twenty-third. To ensure that we are following the best practices, we've, we are conducting a legal review regarding our target demographics, how we use them, and we will share those findings as soon as possible. Three, any future visits by community organizations will be sure to fully explain how these targets are selected and to avoid any confusion in the future. And we've apologized to the scout troop for not providing a full explanation of those targets, which we've contacted the scout leader, and I've had direct conversations with him, and I can, I, I can address those conversations in a press release that I did earlier. But with that, I stand here in front of the community, in front of my council, in front of my city manager, ready to provide further context, information as needed. Thank you.
Chief, if I could, and city manager, we appreciate your acknowledgement of the sensitivity of this issue. And this is not to indict the entire police department at all, because we have a great police department in Farmington Hills. I've always supported the police department regarding their budget and the resources they may need. But in the organization, there are bad apples. And, and what happened here with this particular incident, in my viewpoint, needs to be determined if, if the, was it a right decision to play those targets? In a diverse community, twenty percent African-American, twenty percent other races in our community, I think it was a bad, bad decision. Because of the fact that there are other options to be used there, silhouettes would have been most appropriate. I really, I don't see it just as a, a good reason to use those targets at all. I really don't. I appreciate your comments, which you made there regarding that. And again, this is no indictment of the entire department. Oftentimes, when African-Americans speak about the police department, and they're criticized because of the fact that, you know, we love our police department. But the fact is, there, in every organization, there are bad apples. So that's one of my concern, my concern there. I like, I'm glad the fact that we took the pictures down, and I'd like to see those pictures permanently removed from all targets, training, period. Second point is that you and I have had a number of discussions regarding racial profiling in our community, and this is an appropriate time to talk about that as well. Three weeks ago, I brought to the city council the information regarding racial disparity in citations in our community. There were two to one in regards to black population versus citations. Thirty-eight percent of the tickets were issued to black people in our city, black motorists versus the ninety percent of the population, two to one. And I asked for an explanation that time in regards to what would, I gave you some ideas as to what may have basically led to that in regards to policing in certain areas. And I have not gotten a report since then. That's been three weeks ago. So I just want to put that on the record that I did bring this up to you regarding that. And I think it's important as a community, as a city council member, and I've talked to residents across this community regarding racial profiling, regarding this particular issue about the training targets. And most people in our community, if I talk to them, they, they are appalled by what happened here regarding these targets being used. Secondly, in regards to racial profiling of people in our community, they're appalled by that as well. They don't like that. People want to live in a community where basically they don't feel as though certain groups are being targeted. So when I talk to them about racial disparity regarding citations, they don't like that. They also want to see a diverse workforce in this community as well. And so I just wanted to point those comments out, that I appreciate the fact that the, we've taken those pictures down. It's the right thing to do. Look forward to your review in regards to permanent removal of those pictures out of the targeting process, and that we do continue to work on the issue of racial profiling in our community, particularly regarding citations in this community. We have a great community here. Farmington Hills is a beautiful community. We are a safe community. We have great quality of life, great city services, and we have, this is a great community. But we can be even greater if the fact that if diversity and equity and inclusion was valued to the extent that I want to be valued. That is, that we represent a workforce, number one. Number two, that we don't have racial profiling of African-American citizens regarding being motorists in our community, and that we, we are keenly interested and aware of the fact that we are a racially diverse community. Thank you. So my comments.
Yes, Mr. Bruce, Dr. Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a bit of background about me. I was born in Detroit, raised in Highland Park, went to Highland Park Schools. Obviously didn't grow up as a black American, but I've seen, growing up, many, 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 many episodes of racism. Is there systemic racism? Absolutely, absolutely there is. It's all around us, and I still see it. So that is, goes without saying that that occurs. Racial, racial profiling happens. Absolutely it does. Do people get pulled over because of their color, driving while black? Absolutely they do. So I would be the first to admit that that happens. And have I benefited from white privilege? Probably. Maybe I don't even know about it, but I'm sure that's been there too. So I think that that is absolutely there. I've always been, I think, a person that has always been about fairness, absolutely, a hundred percent wanting people to be treated fairly at all times, in every situation. And it angers me when I see anybody not being treated fairly. It really just boils my blood when I see that happen. No matter what the issue is, no matter what side, no matter what is going on, I want to see fairness. And I, I support that all the time. So, and as a clinical psychologist who has treated all kinds of people over the last thirty-five years, a neuropsychologist, I think I'm a bit of an expert in human performance. And part of that is implicit bias. The biases that we carry with us from how we were raised, just naturally who we are and what we are. And there, we all have our implicit biases. But what is the job of a, of a training of a police officer, to train implicit bias out of you so that you treat everyone fairly and give everyone the same chance? That is the goal of what you want to do. So let's say that a white police officer has that implicit bias and is, discriminates against people of color, no matter who they are, in certain circumstances, and assumes that anything that that person does is wrong, or anything that they're carrying is a gun. We want to train that out of them. But how do we train that out of them? By just presenting them with silhouettes? That's not going to train it out of them. You change the behavioral expectation. You retrain the brain as to what to expect when they encounter different people. And that, you know what? When they encounter a black person carrying a phone, that's what they're carrying. They're not carrying a gun. You know, that's what we have to train them on. And if we just train with silhouettes, they're not getting that training. They're not eliminating that bias. So that if we train by showing pictures of all different kinds of races, holding guns, not holding guns, holding cell phones, not holding cell phones, that is going to be the only thing that is going to change that behavior, changing that brain, that perception, that, overriding that programming of that implicit bias. If we remove that, we are going to make this community less safe, because we're not going to train that implicit bias out of our officers, and the ones that have it, that will stay there, and those expectations, those negative, wrong expectations will stay. So if they do encounter a black person, brown person, Asian person, whomever, holding a cellphone at night, if their implicit bias is they're a danger because of their color or some other factor, then they're going to respond in the wrong way. So I think these targets are appropriate. They're used nationally, and they help defeat that implicit bias. They help overwrite that programming. And so I think that, chief, would you agree, is there any other way that you can think of that you could, with silhouettes, train away implicit bias? I mean, how, how else would you do it if you didn't use targets that show people through all different walks of life, through all different experiences, or all different possibilities? Can you train away implicit bias just by using silhouettes with numbers and round things on them?
In my twenty-seven years of experience, I've been a firearms instructor, a rifle instructor, a DT instructor. I've also been a fair and impartial policing instructor for implicit bias training in our department. And that is exactly the intent of everything we do in every aspect of our training, is to train, to expose our officers to everyone that they, they encounter in their, the performance of their duties, to monitor their implicit bias, to guard against it, and to not let any implicit biases, stereotypes, stigmas influence any decision that they make, whether it's a, it's an arrest situation, a citation being delivered, a traffic stop, a use of force, a, a report situation, anything. We take that element out of everything we do.
Do you think these targets help people from not being shot?
Yes.
I agree with that.
I do.
I agree with that.
And my counterparts from around the southeast Michigan area in law enforcement, many of I had conversations with today, have said they reference our training as the gold standard in Oakland County for training. And that due to staffing issues, due to financial constraints of training budgets and resource budgets, that they're trying to move towards similar training that we have, either with our Milo system or our range training, our defensive tactics training, our subject control training.
I agree with that. And one of the, somebody spoke earlier about how they want to be listened to. I agree. I want everybody to be listened to. I want everybody to have the chance to have their concerns, to voice their concerns and be listened to. But we can't listen to you if you don't come to us. And I guess I'm very disappointed and somewhat angry that a few people went around us, went around the chief, went around the city manager, and went right to the press without giving anybody in the city a chance to explain and respond as to why things are the way that they are. And automatically assume all of these very nefarious things that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, are not there. So I think that is something that's more irritating to me, is not being given the chance to be listened to from this side, when we are always, as Ms. Smith always says, we have an open door policy, just like she does. And we went through that police academy training together in this boulware as well, and Ken Massey, and went through some very, very eye-opening courses, especially in the implicit bias section, which was, I thought, excellent. And so I, I really am glad everybody's having a chance to speak and to be listened to. And I just want us to be able to, be given the opportunity to have this, have information brought to us so that we can respond, and we can be listened to as well, so that we can work together. We can't work together with people who don't come to us and don't give us the opportunity to work with you. So that, those are my concerns. But I think these targets are an important part of keeping people alive, keeping them safe, helping officers learn how not to, to get rid of that implicit bias, overwrite that programming that's there in all of us, and not to shoot people when there's no reason to. And I think it keeps them safe, it keeps our community safe, and I'm in favor of using that type of programming, because it works. And from my human factors experience for thirty-five years, I think that's important. Thank you very much.
Before I turn it over to some questions or comments that council member Noel wants to make, I firmly believe that not only is this an emotional issue, but to many of you, it speaks to the only responses that you know throughout history. And we're trying to work through that, and we don't want that to happen. And if we need to have the targets that the chief is talking about, you need to know why. You need to understand why, and you need to sign off on it, because this is your community too. And we are going to do everything in our power to make sure that the decisions that are made like this include you, so that you don't have any questions, so that you know why things are happening, because you are part of this community. We are all part of a solution, and we are not supposed to be against one another. We are to be working together, because I need to keep all of my neighbors safe, just like you do. And so I'm, I'm going to turn it over to council member Noel now, but I just want you to know that if this training is appropriate and, and needed, then you should see why, you should know why. And I would like to have the chief, after all is said and done, at the end of this summer, to open up the police department training range, so that you can see what we use and why we use it, so that you're not left just relying left just relying on some photographs that were taken, but that you can actually tour the building that you pay for. And I think that's an important part of all of us healing and not jumping to conclusions. And we will continue to work together. And I also want to reference that last week, or the week before, I can't remember, and Mabel Fox, maybe you can tell me, it was the week before last, right?
It was the week before.
When we all met with the police chief and the city managers of, and the mayor of Farmington, as well as Farmington Hills.
Yes.
Yes. And we agreed to hold, would you want to come up real quickly and say, I know that, yeah, just, I'm just gonna, and then I'll let Councilmember Noel.
For you who may not know who I am, I'm Mabel Fox. I have been in this Farmington Hills for 25 years. I have two boys that I, that are now young adults. I know that I'm not answering your question directly, but I do want to thank Council Bridges for the information that he has brought out to this forum today. Because when we talked, and when we also talked to the other mayor, we talked about tolerance versus wanting to be a part of this city. And we know that there's problems here. And the problems have been here for years. I've been here for years. I have been working with the ACLU for several years on police profiling. I look at your dashboards, and your dashboards have, where it's only 20% African Americans here, and your dashboards are just blowing up as it relates to the numbers of, of, of police stops and police tickets and all of this. This is not because we just got this kind of in our head. It's because we came here with the idea that we would be, have a feeling of being belong here, and not just tolerate. Do you want to just be tolerated? Who wants to just be tolerated? We want to feel like we belong. But then when we go into the city offices, we don't see anybody look like us. That tells us we don't belong. We look at the data from these police stops and what have you, and it says, oh, we don't really belong here. We look at some things that happened in the school district that says to us, we don't really belong here. We're just being tolerated. And we've got to figure out how to move from that. I'm very open to that. I've been working with the police, Farmington Police in 2018 had a forum, because she kept calling my kid over. So I want us to come together, but we all, we're going to have to make some changes. We're here, we pay our taxes. That tells us we belong here. Just stop tolerating us. And think of us as human beings. Think of us as mothers and fathers, just like you. Think of us like that. You don't want to be tolerated, do you? You want to feel like you belong. The way you want to feel like you belong is the way we want to feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to point out that to the end of that, we did have a discussion about the statistics that are out there, and we do put them on a dashboard, but I think there needs to be context around them as well. And so we have pledged, as the city of Farmington Hills, as the school board, and as the city of Farmington, to come together for more, some more common meetings, explanations of where these stats come from, how they're put together. And we will also have those as open meetings, too, because you, you need, I didn't know that if a car is pulled over, it can get more than one citation. So I see a citation, and I think, okay, that's one car. I see another citation, that's another car. No, one car can get five citations. So the stats aren't necessarily, they are what they are, but they're not exactly what they are, because they don't tell you how many stops to how many citations. But, but there's a lot of problems like that. And we need to all understand the data that we're looking at to make sure that we're all doing things together. And I don't want to be tolerated either. I want to be part of a community that belongs with each other. And I think that's what we're all struggling to accomplish, and we will work diligently toward that end. And that is my promise, and our consultant, DEI consultant is here, too, and she is guiding us through this, because we take all of this extremely seriously, to the depths of our souls. And I can't make it more clear than that.
So.
And I've got to let Councilmember Noel speak.
I know. What Mayor Barnett is referencing, too, in the past, as board members and city council members, we have had, since I've been on the board for six years, we have had Dr. Massey, Councilwoman Noel, Mr. Bridges, Dr. Bruce, and our two new members have not taken part due to COVID. We used to have a city with our school board. We would have what you would call the cities and the school board meet together. And we have not been able to do that as of recent. We are working now with the chief of police and with the Farmington Police Department, as well as both mayors, and our cities, and our city council members, to come back and put that back in place, so that what we do is, what we want to start off with is a retreat for each and every one of us to know each other, because the city councils have new city council members, as we have four new board members on our, on our school board. With that being said, then after this retreat that we are working on together, we will go from there and then have it open where it can be televised with the cities, to have these, what, the community members can have these conversations to know what the, both cities are doing, as well as the school board. And then we will be working as an entity to work together. And that's what we're working on now, and that's what we're building on. And that is going to happen in the fall. So we will be doing those again. We've hosted them in, like at Longacre House, or at one of our schools, especially one of our schools that have been just renovated. So that's what we're working on. So that was to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to stop the conversation, but we have some members that.
I'll be quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know.
Yes.
How many more people need to comment here, but I'll be quick about this. So yes, I want to be part of a community that respects everyone. And I want to be part of a community that has the best-trained police department in all of Michigan, in all of the United States. Because I don't want any accidental shootings of people of any color, whether it's white, brown, black, red. I don't want that. No one here wants that. I think we can all agree on that. So my question, I have a question for you, Chief King. Like many people here, I've gone target shooting as well, and I've shot at silhouettes. That's what you do when you target shoot. I've also been able to participate in the video training that the police department goes through, which is live simulation. So it will have a variety of situations, people of different genders, different colors, some have guns, some don't. They're coming around a corner, you can't see them, and you have to quickly react like that, like police officers do, in real time. I didn't do very well at the training, I admit it. Luckily, I'm not a police officer, so you don't have to worry about that. But our police officers do have to react that quick. And as I said, I want everyone to be respected. I don't want an accidental shooting. So what I want to understand is, we've heard tonight about the, the actual photos versus the silhouettes, and that they are a variety of genders, men and women, they are a variety of people of different colors. We've heard that you practice in low light, in like a bright light, a daylight, and a darker, a darker light. Because obviously, as a police officer, you have to look differently. Your eyes receive things differently in different lights. And quite honestly, people of different sizes, shapes, colors, genders, all look differently in different lights, and you have to know how to respond to it. So what I want to understand is exactly how that helps better equip a police officer if we use the photos versus just using silhouettes. Could you please explain that to me, and the audience, of course?
Thank you for the question, ma'am. Just like in our fair and impartial policing, one of the biggest focuses is exposure, getting to know, getting, learning, interacting, having that exposure, positive exposures, having, being able to understand that when you encounter a situation or an event, or you get dispatched to a fight, or domestic situation, or a person suffering from a mental health crisis, it's the behavior, it's the action, it's what's going on, not who it is, what it is, or what they look like. That is the, is a primary tenet of what we teach in our implicit bias training and our fair and impartial policing training. It doesn't stop at our force response training, because we're, we're encountering individuals that are presenting us with a variety of threat, not threat, situations where people may not cooperate with our verbal commands, they may be hard of hearing, they may be, they may be deaf, they may not speak English. We have to prepare for all of those situations. We have a diverse community. Our, our, our community, as well as our department, is diverse, inclusive, and that doesn't stop at our training. That training and everything we do, whether it's verbal de-escalation tactics, person-on-person, subject control, threat assessment, any kind of that force training, it applies everywhere. I was, I didn't know how deep into the content and focus of the training, our training systems, our target selection. We've done a lot of research on this. I'm not a subject matter expert, but in the last four days, I've learned a lot that I didn't even know I knew about our training, and why we do it, and why we don't do trainings, and why other cities don't do those, these trainings, and why those other cities have conflicts with their community, have issues with use of force issues, have tragedies that occur when their police officers are undertrained, underconfident, underexposed to their community, don't know their community, don't work with their community, and don't partner with their community. That doesn't stop at training. That, those training images are as, as important and apply to the totality of our training, the totality of our situational awareness, when we are engaging in our Milo system. And that's the virtual system that many agencies, from mental health agencies, educational agencies, police departments, all of our community colleges, all of our academies, U of M, CMU, MSU, that, that system is used on a wide basis in Michigan. And it's all consistent with those targets. Those targets are, we, we, we purchase 23 different targets. We have a variety of male and female, Caucasian, African-American. Of those targets, 85% of our targets are Caucasian, 15% of our targets are African-American. That is consistent with both our Milo training demographics on a national basis, on a local basis, and it's less representative than what them coles, the licensing body over law enforcement, has on their, their targets. We do everything with a focus on our community. Everything is built for Farmington Hills, Michigan, not Canton, Ohio, or Los Angeles, California. Everything is based on Farmington Hills, Michigan, because that's the community we serve, and that's the community we partner with. And those targets are representative of that community, even less so. And it's a critical point, not only to what we engage and we assess as a threat, but more importantly, what we don't interpret as a threat. And we condition that, any kind of implicit bias, if it's there, to not have officers focus on a specific demographic. It is in, it's backed by the science, it's backed by the literature, it's backed by everything in our training as a whole. I know I've rambled on, and I apologize. I hope I've answered your question.
Thank you for the explanation.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. You know, one of the things that, as a councilperson, that I'm proud of for myself, is the ability to listen. And I've listened tonight. And I think everyone who spoke, spoke from their own truth. But as a, and our truths sometimes come out differently depending upon your experiences. And as an African-American woman who's navigated this earth for some time, our experiences are different than white people. So there are certain triggers that we have. When we see, for example, a target practice of a black individual, it triggers something in us. And I think that's why we all came out, because we know that the policing of black bodies throughout history, starting with the first police who were slave, slave catchers, trying to catch slaves and take them back to their enslaved masters. So I, I think, what I, what I'm listening, what I'm hearing is that I don't think anyone is indicting our police department, because I think our police department is an accredited agencies, and there are some good practices there and good police officers. But as Sergeant Clark said earlier, Sergeant Clark said, I'm sorry, Officer Clark said, it needs.
Promoted you.
It, it, he said, it needs work, like everything needs work. And I think that's how we should look at it, that we have work to do in this city. January 2021 last year, this council decided that we needed work. And that one way that we could accomplish this was to hire a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer, to help us navigate the work that we need to do. So as a result of that conversation, and getting that money in the budget to hire a DEI officer for 2021, we hired Darlene King, who's sitting there, as our consultant. She's been consulting for almost 18 months. It's been a long time. I think that consulting period should be over with. And it, it was been a long since the council decided.
Since the council.
Yes. It's been, it's been a while. I know, you came in, wouldn't you come in?
It's been about eight months.
Eight, okay, eight months. I think eight months is too long. I think it's long in the sense that if we had a DEI person, they could help us navigate situations such as this one, that's come from the community, and other situations that we've experienced over the past few months. Because when, I think Ms. Fox had mentioned, one of the things that for, as an African-American, black person, you don't, just don't want to be tolerated. You want to be welcomed. And how can you tell that you're welcome? When you walk in spaces and you see other people like you, then there's a comfort level that you have. But when you walk in public spaces and you don't see yourself, or when you see employees out trimming your trees, or whatever city services are offered, and you don't see people like you, there is an uncomfort level to that. So I've listened, but listening without action is no good. So I think what we need to do at this point is, I am going to request, recommend, advocate, that we get in place right now, really quickly, start the hiring process for a DEI person. That person can then work with Darlene to get these practices in place that will make us a more welcoming community, and a better community, and do the work that we need to do here in this city. So that would be my suggestion. It's time to start the consulting phase. It's, to me, it's. It, it's, to me, it's gone on too long. It's too long. Whatever data is there is there. If you need more data, more consulting, you need to work with the DEI person, that person has some accountability to the council, that person working through our city manager here can come to the council every 60 or 90 days, apprise of, apprise us what's going on, what they've uncovered, what are the systematic changes that we need to make to the city to be a more welcoming city for all of our citizens, be it African-Americans or students who struggle or children with handicaps or those who are blind, uh, who need sign language. We have to be more inclusive, and we are not that city yet, but I know that we can be. Because if I thought that we could not be, I would not be sitting on the council. I joined the council because I wanted to make a difference, make us a better city for all of us. But to listen to everybody, because everyone has their own point of view, own point of view, their own, uh, way of thinking, and sometimes we fail to overlook our competence or stand in our confidence and listen to other people make some commentary. And I think that we have to listen with open ears, if someone says it and they believe it to be true, then we need to listen to it and work from that premise. We can talk all we want about whether the, the target's black, white, or green, or purple, whatever, but if we have a DEI consultant like Ms. King here and a DEI person who can help us navigate through this so that we can then report that to the community, hold forms or whatever, like I think Mayor, you and Mabel and us, our, our council, our mayor from, uh, Farmington, then we can become a better city. But we just can't stay in the space that we're in, always questioning, uh, whether we're doing the right thing or trying to prove a point that, the point is just point, proving a point is pointless if people don't believe it or don't accept it. So I think that's our way forward from this situation that we're in right now, is to immediately put out an application to, uh, hire a DEI director that's been in our budget since 2021.
Uh, Mr. McHern, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Bowler. I appreciate that, but I really do. I, I had a feeling that was going to come up this evening, um, and that's why I wanted Darlene here. I, I wanted her here, um, to expand on her thoughts, our thoughts about the progression of the program. Um, you know, I, I made this, I made a commitment to council, it was in the budget, it's still in the budget, and when we're ready to make that transition and we think it's going to be to the best benefit of the effort, then we'll certainly, y, you have my commitment, we're gonna, we will pull that trigger. But so, can I bring Darlene up and have her-
I would love it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, to the community. I am Darlene King. I am the principal consultant for Life's Journey Training and Consulting. I have been in the space of diversity, equity, and inclusion for about 20 years now. So I've worked with other municipalities as well as for-profits and nonprofits as well. I have been working with the city of Farmington Hills for about eight months now, and we have been in the fact-finding stage. We have been in data analysis and really identifying gaps, because you can't move forward unless you know where you are. What typically happens and occurs is as we move forward in this space, which we refer to as a journey, things arise that are part of the culture within organizations, whether it's a municipality, whether it is a school district, whether it is a for-profit or a nonprofit. And so what it does is it gives us a really, um, great, uh, perception or, or perspective into what's really happening and what's really going on and what the opportunities are. We've heard a lot of words today. We've heard bias, we've heard empathy, we've heard systemic and institutional racism, we've heard hurt, we've heard fear, we've heard a lot of things today. All of those things are part of this work. How do we move past those things in order to be able to grow and advance? I want the community to be very clear that the city of Farmington Hills did not just bring me on. They were proactive in starting this effort and starting this initiative. So this is something that they are committed to actually doing. When we talk about hiring a chief diversity officer, it is very important to, um, understand that every organization, um, every municipality has its own culture. Best practice nationally and globally is, is that you hire from within. Because traditionally, when you hire from within, that within employee or colleague already has a very great understanding about the internal culture. Hiring externally to do this work and to lead this work is against best practice. And it is against best practice because it will take them a year to a year and a half to literally learn the lay of the land before they can even begin to implement shifting culture, because that is what diversity, equity, and inclusion is about. It is about culture shift. It is about policy and procedure shift. It is about policy and procedural changes. It is about ensuring that the community is represented internally and who's internal represents the community external. I think it is important for the community to know that this is the journey that the city has made. This is the commitment that the mayor has made, this is a commitment that the city council has made, this is the commitment that your city manager has made. We refer to this work as a journey because you cannot embark change in this space overnight. You cannot embark change in eight months. If I were not here and there was a chief diversity officer present, they themselves in eight months would not be able to embark change, because it is a process. Because we are talking, I think the gentleman right here mentioned about 400 years of systemic and institutional systems and processes and procedures that exist in our country and our society. It doesn't change overnight. So with that, Ms. Bowler, I think that it is definitely a need for a chief diversity officer. Is there a need or a director or whatever label that you provide for them, it is. But I think it is also important to, um, manage expectations around progress as you begin to implement this work and begin to do this work. If the decision is made to bring in a chief diversity, which I completely support, but I think that it is important to be able to, to take a look at exactly where you are, look at who's internal, opposed to looking from an external perspective, because an external individual is going to elongate the process just because of the nature of being able to have to advance the work.
Yeah, I, I understand that part.
Yeah.
That change is, change is, is a process, it's a journey.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, what I'm thinking, and that you have to manage expectation.
True.
We have you and you're, you're helping us.
Yes.
It's my thinking and my belief that this is the time, if we're gonna hire from within, that's your, your, your recommendation.
Yes.
That we do so now while you're still going through this process.
Yes.
And they could, that person could be at the beginning of the journey.
Yeah.
And not come in when the journey is eight, nine, or 10 months old.
Or another year old.
Another year old.
Yes, ma'am.
It should be now.
Yes.
We still have you. They can work with you. There's some accountability there.
Wow.
Um, they could come back and report, you know, can manage that. Because I know you're, Gary, you have a real busy schedule, that you, you know, a lot of things that you're doing, but if this is really important to us and we believe it's important, then we need to hire that person now.
And, and, and I am not in, I am not in disagreement with that. My, my only recommendation would be that if you all can find someone internally, I would strongly recommend that, finding and looking for someone from an internal perspective that has the, the relationships, because this work is about relationship. This work is about community, community connectivity, corporate responsibility, employee engagement. It is about workforce development. I hear, um, Councilmember Bridges referred to, you know, the advancement and the increase in diversity from a representation perspective as a part of the city, which I think that that is the ultimate goal of all, especially with your, um, HR director, you know, it's something that he is very focused on and being able to, you know, incorporate that as well. So I, I think at the beginning and the end of the day, everyone is on the same page to be able to advance this work. The question becomes, how do we advance it in the best way possible to support both internally and externally? And I think that we have the team to be able to do that, we just need to make the decision on how to do that. Yeah.
Ms. King.
Yes, sir.
Before your time today, because we've been asking for, uh, your presence and, uh, it was supposed to be scheduled down the road, and I know this issue that occurred this week has, uh, I'm, I'm appreciative of the fact the city manager asked you to be here today. Because, uh, with, one of the questions that we were concerned about was, you know, um, we wanted to get, give us, give you, have you give us an update. So you provided that brief update there today, I appreciate that. The problems in Farmington Hills in regards to, again, we are a great community.
Yes.
Beautiful community.
Yes.
Uh, we are, we are a safe community, great quality of life, great city services, uh, a safe city, fiscally well-managed, but we have some acute problems in regards to diversity.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we will not be a great community until we deal with these issues, in my viewpoint, uh, in regards to the issue of a lack of representation of employees across this city. Uh, we walk in this city hall, it's not representative of the population at all, and it's been that way for a long period of time. I've been on this council for 14 years, and I've seen scant progress in that issue.
Mm-hmm.
Scant progress on that issue. We've had openings. We had, we talked to the HR director recently regarding a budget presentation, and he informed us, he was asked a pointed questions in regards to, are people of color applying for jobs here? The answer was yes. Have they been in the openings? Yes. We're not getting those openings. So that's the reason why, and again, 14 years of being on council, and I've seen this very small change in representation of employees across all employee groups, uh, and, uh, that's the reason why this is an acute problem. Secondly, the issue regarding the, the police, uh, target issue, if a diversity officer would have been, maybe he would have saw that, and basically made a recommendation opposing that particular point of view regarding that issue. That does not add to diversity of this community regarding sensitivity at all.
I agree.
Third point is in regards to the issue regarding, uh, police stops, citation issues. The fact is, the city still has two to one in regards to black population versus citation issue in this community. If we had a diversity officer involved, maybe that could help that police department to be more sensitive to the issue and make you point, pointing out what officers are involved in this. Now again, I am not indicting all officers in our city at all, I want to make that clear. Fact is, all it takes is three or four officers to be involved with something like that and make these numbers be the way they are in regards to blacks receiving twice the amount of, uh, tickets versus the population. So, uh, that, that's, those, these are acute problems in my viewpoint in the city of Farmington Hills, along with us having some great assets in this community, we're a great community, but we need to work on these issues. These are some, uh, some immediate problems that has to be addressed, in my viewpoint.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't disagree with either you or Councilwoman Bowler. I think that you are absolutely correct, um, but I think that it is also something that is systemic across our country as a whole. It is a challenge and it is an issue not just here.
Yes.
But it is a challenge and an issue in Grand Rapids, it's a challenge and issue in Orange County, it's, it's, it's everywhere. And so when you think about it, the question becomes, what's the answer to that? And you, you provide more assistance and more training and more support, and so to be able to have some internal efforts and some internal initiatives to do that, but what I want you all to be very clear, and even the community to be very clear, you bring in a chief diversity officer, it is not going to give you an immediate-
I know that.
-impact, okay?
You know that.
All right? And so as long as you are able to manage those expectations and know that it's not gonna give you an immediate, will it be able to assist in addressing those challenges and being able to create some, some gap fillers in order to advance those things? You say you've been here for 14 years and you've been looking for more diversity within the city, more diversity within the, you know, that represents the likeness of the community. I've only been here for eight months, so I can't answer for what has happened for the last 14 years, okay? You know what I mean? I haven't been a part of that. So I can't an, answer what that, from, from that. But what it does speak to is how do you begin to shift culture and that from 14 years ago to today, the culture, based upon what you're saying, hasn't shifted that much? And so how do you do that?
It's my, it's my goal, it's my goal. Farmington Hills can be a community that the entire country can look to and say, hey, they made it work there.
Yes.
In regards to diversity, equity, inclusion. Our population statistically, demographically mirrors the country in regards to 40% of the population.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Is a minority. This community is 40% minority-based.
Yes.
We can be an example for other countries across the country if we take this issue head-on and start addressing these issues. I'm not asking for immediate results.
Yes.
I'm asking for progress, though.
Yes, for, for some progress. I, I totally agree. I totally agree. I think it's important to also understand that there is still a systematic process-
Yes.
-to this work, to be able to get to your results. I, I, I am, um, excited about the systematic steps that the city is taking and that they have already taken in order to get to the next steps of strategy, but I think that it is a, an additional session and an additional conversation about what does that next step look like relative to having that director or having that individual in to be able to help move the needle and push the needle-
Thank you.
-on the work. Well, before I ask, um, uh, Councilmember Newland, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Newland to, to give remarks, I want to point out there has been a big shift, um, already, um, not seismic of high proportions.
Right.
But since I was first elected in 1995, I can tell you there has been an ongoing commitment, especially under Chief King, to change the, um, the demographic outlook of what our police department looks like, and same with our fire department and internal departments. Um, so we are, are always trying to diversify more. We just don't have a lot of openings in positions, and you, you can't fire somebody and then replace them. That's, that's not a practical solution, and I know you're working through that right now.
Absolutely.
But if you were at the, um, police department's, um, new hiring and swearing-in ceremony, you would have seen that of the cadets we hired, more than half of them-
Were diverse candidates.
Were diverse candidates.
Yes.
And including the promotions were, um, were, uh, diverse candidates, and, um, and maybe Officer Clark should take a test and put his name in and we can see you move up. Anyway, you've, you've done a great job, and I, I'm not trying to single you out at all. I'm just trying to point out that, um, we have made a lot of change and, and you, you spoke beautifully tonight, and, and, um, everybody who's been here has had something to add to the conversation. And Darlene, I would like to see you come back at a study session where we can open it up to the public and have everybody here, and you can talk about where we are in the process and everything else, um, because I do not want to leave the impression that we haven't changed. We have changed.
Yes.
We're not changing fast enough, and we haven't changed as dramatically as we'd like to. But part of that has to do with the, the people that were hired that are already here and we're waiting for openings to try to diversify our hiring options, and, um, I think we are moving in a positive direction.
And you are very much so moving in a positive, or-
And I wanted, I want, I didn't want to leave it-
Absolutely.
...that we're not doing anything. We are.
No, you are, you are doing a lot.
And every one of the members of this council has been very proactive in that-
Absolutely.
...and has been a part of it. So I know that, that council, that Mayor Pro Tem Newland wants to speak, and Dr. Massey, you haven't spoken yet, and I don't know if you want to or if you want to.
I, I, if the mayor Pro Tem wants to make her comments first, but I have comments to make.
I would love to hear them as well. Can you go first?
Will you? No, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I apologize, I'm not a very good speaker, and things will just come out of my brain, and they may not be connected. So, I first off, Officer Clark has left, and I wanted to thank him for coming. I understand why he came. He's a, he is a, he is a police officer. I'm a nurse, and those two professions, they become part of your soul. And those two professions, they become part of your soul. And when he saw the backlash, the concern toward his profession, as I would as a nurse, he had to come and speak. So I really want to thank him for his courage and his passion for coming. Next, I want to say that I was upset by some of the comments on social media. And one of the comments was, as a white person, a white city person on council, that I didn't care. I want to let everybody know that I do care. I don't take to social media to put my feelings out there. I don't use social media to conflict or to come back at other comments. So I want to let everybody know that I listen and I do care. Some may say that, as a white woman, I don't understand. But you only understand through empathy and exposure. And I want to relay an experience that I had the last two years. My younger daughter dates, lives with, I don't know what their connection is, their relationship of a man with a black man. He's been stopped many times because he drives a nice car. And when COVID began and we had all the restrictions and you couldn't drive after hours, I was afraid he was going to be stopped. Now, he is an EMT. He wears a uniform going back and forth to work. I was afraid that he was going to be stopped at 3:00 in the morning and get hurt. So I had the honor and the empathy. I got him an EMT sticker to put on the back of the car because I was so afraid for him. So we all have to be allowed to have, to have that experience, to have that empathy, to have the exchange of feelings that, and be allowed to do that, whether we're black or white, to know what all of us are feeling in this moment. So that's what I got to say. And of course, I was also very taken back. I've only been in the seat for three years. I had no idea. I, when they were talking about target practice, I thought they were silhouettes. I had no idea. Some things happen and you just don't know every piece of the city. I mean, I'm still, I, this quarter of the city, I've not even been in really as either a council member or as a resident. But I know how images hurt. Again, another personal story. We were first building our house here in Farmington Hills, rebuilding it, building up. And my husband had to go buy equipment for electrical project. And he had our three, three, three children with him, two, our two daughters and our son. He went to a distributor and he was told to go get his supplies in the back. Well, when he drove to the back, there was numerous pictures of scantily clad women, some without no clothing at all. And he walked in and he said, I will not do business with you because your images could hurt my children. So I know how these images could be perceived. And I support, so I don't, so I support your feelings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, it was really good to see the number of folks that came out to talk with us and share their viewpoints this evening. The issue that brought most of these people out was an emotional one. And in my, in looking at what brought these people here, Dr. Coleman Burns actually talked about the issue of gaslighting. The images that were selected to be pushed out that caused that emotional response were selectively picked. And that's why I brought up the issue earlier about the number of different images that were out there, the percentages and so forth. Because you can look at real data, logical data, and then there's the emotional side. And I'm not going to deny that those emotional reasons, while I may feel that they, these images were selected to invoke that emotional response and get people out here, it also got us, it also got people out here so that we could start this dialogue. And this city, as far as I have been involved with it, and I, I'm sitting up here in my 19th year on this council, has always tried to be transparent. We have always tried to communicate with all of our residents and all the people that pass through this community and treat them with respect and dignity. And it does bother me a little bit when people don't think we do that because racism, period, is wrong. That's a simple, simple fact. I'm also going to say I grew up in this community. I've been here essentially my whole life. And this community has changed. It has changed in its demographics. And I will, back in 1993, when the community demographics were starting to change, I will credit Karen Bolson, who also used to be on our school board. She was one of the key leaders in starting the Multicultural, Multiracial Community Council. And that is one of the great reasons this community did well. It's not perfect. We've heard a lot. It, it wasn't, you know, we can't, we're humans. I don't know of any humans that do things perfectly. But we made efforts. And we had heritage weeks and we, we embraced the diversity. And I'm going to say that a lot of people that I talked to moved to this community because of the diversity that was in, that, that exists within Farmington and Farmington Hills. And I use, while I, we are Farmington Hills, we are one big, large community with two political entities that run them. And both of these communities embrace this concept. What brought us here tonight in talking about these images that were disturbing to people? We've heard from the police chief and so forth. I hope that it was well communicated that these are part of an educational process to make our police officers and our public safety officers to be the best trained in the state. That's evidenced by the fact that our communities have not only had accredited policing agencies, but we've been reaccredited. And I like, the chief has made this comment before. Accreditation is a promise. Reaccreditation is harder because it's the promise kept. And we are actually living that. And these are based on best practices. That's part of these training efforts. Now, while they may be difficult to look at, they were selectively picked. And note that if this was a huge acute problem, this happened back at the beginning of April. We're almost at the beginning of July. What occurred, what happened in that time period? And I think that, you know, this is where it's kind of gotten developed, but it gave us an opportunity to have this conversation, which is great. Something that did not get picked up on. We didn't talk a lot about it, was the fair and impartial policing training that our officers go through. It was alluded to when Officer Clark spoke. But the FIP training, it applies the modern science of bias and how bias affects decision making. It educates the participants on the impact of their perception and helps to develop those skills to reduce implicit bias. Not every department has that as part of their training. And our two departments have this as part of our annual training. It is not something that just the, the officers see it once. They see it every year. I also wanted to mention, there's a lot of talk about dashboards. Well, dashboards are, the dashboards that we have are, these are statistical summations. They're lousy. I'm just going to be straight up. When I learned statistics, I learned a little saying that goes along with it. There are lies, damn lies, and then there are statistics. Our dashboards are composites of data that comes from this, from the county. And it does not tease down into where exactly these people are coming from. It doesn't get into arrests from locations, whether or not these were warrants from other entities. It just says, here, you got these number of people arrested, these number of tickets. We're working on it. We need to dig into that and get to the answer because it does, it does play into this. The next thing I wanted to mention is that this discussion on DEI and so forth, this community, every department head knows and has the sensitivity. And they're working to create an issue where we don't have that problem. Now, sort of in summation, without everything else, we have, as in my estimation, we have one of the best, if not the best, policing agency in this state. And it, you don't have to take my word for it. No, I just told you about statistics. But look how the, the cities of Farmington and Farmington Hills are always ranked in the top 10 as safest cities in the state of Michigan. We are in the top echelon of safest cities in the country. And it's because we, we train our officers with best practices. We push those concepts. We move forward with best practices. And that's why our policing, why we live in a safe community. And no one wants us not to live in a safe community. So I personally want to commend the department. I hope that this issue can be put to bed because it does not reflect, it does not reflect any kind of logical or real racism on the department, the part of this department. It actually reflects that we are trying to impart the best training. And in doing so, we've had the success of being a very highly rated, safe city. That's why people come here. And let's use it, let's use this point as a stepping stone because we are all about transparency. Heck, I looked at the request, FOIA request, the Freedom of Information request from the ACLU. And 70, or 61 pages of documents were produced. That's not a community that is trying to hide anything. We're trying to be honest with you. We want people to feel comfortable in this community. And I'm tired of looking at, and I will, you probably get it. I have not had the experience of growing up as a black man. Pretty evident. That said, I'm empathetic. I understand. But it's time for us to, can take all the advances we have made, have good dialogue, and move forward. That's what I think we need to do. And this gives us an opportunity to do that. And I'm really glad to see the dialogue we've had with this community. And Madam Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Barnett. You know, I want to just add one last thing that I think it is important for the commendability of the council as well as your city leadership and for the community to know that the city of Farmington Hills definitely does have a DEI advisory board that is comprised of every department leader in the city that focuses just on these efforts and initiatives of diversity, equity, and inclusion within the city. There is also an advisory DEI council within the city as well that is comprised of a multiplicity of individuals through all of the departments within the city. Even the chief, you have three lieutenants? Is it three lieutenants on the DEI council?
Two sergeants and a detective.
Two sergeants and a detective from the police department sit on the DEI council. So just know that your city officials and your city leaders are definitely committed to this work and committed to doing this work. It is just a journey and not a sprint. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with this, we're going to take a short break of about five minutes. And then we will reconvene to finish the rest of our agenda. And I want to thank you all very much for coming out. And I appreciate the, the conversation. And we look forward to having more opportunities to get to know each other and to work together. Thank you. Thank you.